Oh shit. Start at the end.
That's it. There's some birds.
Yeah.
You've got your VR on?
No, I'm not doing VR. No. There's only three missions. All Arsenal birds are down. Yes, I killed the Arsenal bird.
Nice one.
I've cleared it. Game.
Does that mean you're getting your S license on at that?
No. Free mission, you have to do free mission stats, so you want... But if I restart that, I can't go on free mission no more, I can't do any level I want.
Oh no, don't do it.
I think it's like that, I don't know. Doesn't matter, when you have done them all, clear it all again. We're getting attacked. It's hardly Poobert Council, they're at the fucking door! Oh my god, it's an horrible cow call, Val.
Don't say that on this, straight please.
She's a lying cow.
Yeah, but you know why, I don't want you to say, mention my names, please.
Nobody knows a second name. Don't know where she lives, it's a shame.
You know why.
As soon as you find out where she lives, let's follow her up.
No, we're not doing that, you know why, and you know what's gonna happen, so just leave it at that.
I don't know what's gonna happen, it's gonna be a whitewash. They could just give us the money for an out of the car settlement.
Hmm, just leave what it says it says, please, I'm a little bit tired of it. We'll do the better thing. And I'll talk to you later when we're in our own stream.
Hmm.
And you'll agree with what I've said.
Azil 57 is the fastest one I've got. Not them actually, the... ATF-11, it's a drone. Shall we use it? It's got drones, you fire drones at the enemy. It's DLC, if you didn't come out of Lefty, I had to clear the game. Which might have helped me clear the game. Easier. Let's use... An F-14, Tom, what's the fastest, an F-14 or an F-18? A 15E, Strike Eagle. I'll use that. What have we got? Bombs? Out of air, eight out of air. Starting. Yeah, the reason I like these games is because vehicles, you don't see people die. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It affects people's memory, our minds apparently. Still got a pain in me fucking chest, Sarah. It's poor Muslim. Unless the government are poisoning me. You know what the Russian government are like, our government can do the same as the Russian government, you know? Just spray through the fucking letterbox, we all die. They all die of natural causes, get off with it. Murder. Full on murder. How about the buttons? Different innit, it's a different game. Trying to fly this like water. Nine feet above the water. So we can get lower. Six, five, four. Ooh, got four feet. We'll have to fathom away, Saz. Fathom away, fathom away, fathom away now. Fathom away, fathom away, fathom away, what? Do you want any? You need a PC and a camera? Oh, I forgot you can keep on the misarts. That's that. What's guns again? That's guns. Oh, they're good babe.
I'll never do a cross to chimney later, Dad.
I wouldn't.
I won't, this is it, man.
Keep pressing X on the wrong button to look around. No, they're not, they're underneath me. Way over the head. I hit twice there, didn't make it. We all died. Oh, special planes here. Nah, but there's a special plane behind it, so don't fucking... There he is, Primal. He's about to die. Got a special paint. Oh, we missed it. That's how you get your special paints. See ya, boys! Malaga, there they are.
Good going, Mage Two. Flight commander looks like he's got it.
Let's floor down, it's just one sortie. Now try to be a hero, I want you to make it back in one piece, you hear?
Yeah, I gotta sign with the boss man on this.
Column Zero, what's red, this is HQ, do you confirm any drones?
What's the deal with all the drones?
Column One, return to base and report for deep rape.
Well, you landed, haven't you? Yeah, you have to London now. Ah, didn't have to do the London. Skip. Oh, he was the F-14 Tom, wasn't he? Oh, he was the... Oh, it's F-16E. Strike Eagle, good for ground attacks. Call it Strike Eagle, that's a snick name. Hiya. When I think of a smoke, do me next level and then go to bed, babes. Oh, yeah, sorry. Sorry, lost me tab payers, but they're just there.
And I finished this section, you'd like to see it.
Yeah. You talk about Willis. Black Lives for Justice, All Lives Matter. That was, uh, the Liverpool and the Black Lives Matter mixed together. Justice for the 96, wasn't it? And it was, uh... Black Lives Matter. Anti-government twig, here once again, live on YouTube. Not anti-government, just anti-Arty Poobert Council. They should all be thrown in jail. Shouldn't they, Saz? For thieving against our people. Go to hard work, taxpayers of the town got robbed by Arty Poobert Councilers that lined their own pockets with their money. Off the leisure centre, lined their own pockets buying houses, cars, jewellery, clothes, holidays. And you voted for them. Well, it was rigged anyway, because they took all the votes into the building, because they asked me to go down and start filling them in for them. Uh, will you come down and fill some, uh, voting for Labour for us? Yeah. Corrupt, right to the back teeth, they are. Corrupt to the back teeth. Lying, cheating, dirty rats, born in the Wesley, bred in the Wesley, for a specialised job in the council. Don't say the town's not full of rats, because it is, I've seen them at four o'clock in the morning, and they're sending, I've run it all over.
Have a little bit.
We both have, yeah. Yeah, we both have. I trapped one in a milk crate once and left it there for the next day, so everybody's seen it. Yeah, there was a milk crate at the back of the grand, and I flung it on it and caught it, like, like grot on the rat. And obviously it couldn't get out, so I stayed there till the next morning. Don't know what the council did with it, they probably put it in the offices, give it the job. Fit right in with us. That's where I worked in the grand, that. Me and Thomas done it. Before the exterminator. Arty Poobert Council's exterminator. Billions of them in the town, there's billions of them here, man. Arty Poobert just like, wanna be like London, where they're less, you're less than a meter away from a rat at all times.
On Sundays, they have to turn the light off.
Alright, yeah.
I can't see it, otherwise it's a bay, plus, um... So the diamonds can be different colours to the square on the canvas.
Do you want to do canvases?
No, this is what the car's where I go. The bay's on it, I can't see the bay, under the light.
Same again, when the fuck does that, fucking good, me and you. Shall I go online? Go to online? Some good people online, like, really good fucking players. There is one, what, I sent me a friend's request, he was awesome. He was absolutely awesome, like, every move I did, he was doing exactly the same, like, trying to get me, and I was trying to get him, but it was just the best pilot I've ever seen on this game. Well, not pilots, arcade, isn't it, you just move the stick. You're not really flying a plane.
I couldn't do it.
What, you couldn't do this? Yes, you could. It's easy, it's an easy game, Sarah. Oh, he's a good, can do this.
Yeah, he's pretty good, of course he could, but I have to be interested in again. I play cars, you know, I liked that I liked to play cars. And I'm not racing tomorrow.
Why? It's from the seat, your favourite? Yeah, I've seen it, yeah. Love that flyby of you. Finished. That was quite dark, I reckon, I guess that.
Can get a bit of OCD, like trying to get the line straight on this.
Obsessive cock syndrome?
Yeah, like to get your line straight when you're doing the squares. It's different to the round ones, honestly.
Yeah, I know it will be, you know, the line, round one, you can put them any, anywhere round, can't you?
Yeah.
Hey, let, let's have a look then. Dude, you don't even have to put your wares up, you don't have to do anything on this. Water, look at the water, I got to four feet. Four feet, I got above the water. I wanna see what four feet looks like. Here it is, get the four feet here. There it is, four feet above the water. Four feet, that's lower than us. If somebody was stood up on it, there, I'd have took their head clean off. Dink. Oh, sorry mate! I heard that one, I just changed the camera just when you were gonna hit them. I had to do a loop, because I missed the first call. Boom! Oh, that looks fucking amazing!
And I haven't used anything for any of it straight. I haven't used more ruler or anything.
No, that's good, that's good, that baby.
You know what, that's what my friend, Ali, said when I, she went bloody hell, she's...
Have you done this bit? No.
No, I've done bits of it, you can play those diamonds where I...
I can see them, I can see them, I can see them, I can see them, the smaller one.
She said bloody hell, she said. For your first ever square, she said you've got your lines so straight, it's unreal. I've just stuck them on with a pen and got my tweezers and saved the go a bit.
Yeah, it's good work, alright, alright, yeah, I know.
There, I'll just straighten it.
Yeah, 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 alright then, nice. What I would do is I push a piece of string along the line, so you can, uh, put the sticker on the string. Piece of cotton. Piece of cotton along the line, and stick on the glue. Oh, just use a little bit of cotton. Yeah, true that. Sarah, tape it, pull the pattern off. Tape it, pull the pattern and the glue off. Hold it there, hold it there. Hey! Because I missed the bomber when fresh shot. Oh, go on, you're nicking them. Twiggly cool. Next one. See, it goes easier all the time, though. Should restart the story. Clean it all off. That's space. True. Oh. Yes, I will. Playstation 5. We should have a look on Amazon, see how much, uh, Playstation 5s are, you'll probably get a couple of days early. Just the fat Playstation 5, we don't need nothing else. Don't need the camera or the VR or anything, what have you got, right? I don't want the one with the disc, the disc drive either, so it's cheaper. No. The Pro, you can get one with a disc drive, one without, but you can get a Pro with a disc drive and without as well, the Pro's more graphics. Faster graphics. Faster graphics. I think we're sitting at War Thunderway, you're in a bubble and you can't see further than that bubble.
Amazon. Available.
Yeah.
Playstation 5.
Yeah.
We don't know when or if this item will be back in stock.
Sold out. Sold out. It's F 18. Oh, shut her down! Boom, shut her down.
November 19th, 2020.
Mm-hmm.
As of 1 P M today, the Kingdom of Arujia has declared war on the Osean Federation.
Yay! The Kingdom of Alipul. They don't even have a drone in the game? Yeah, they have. It was Alipul Borough Council, blow them all up. (coughing) Dry till, to the white house.
Of course, it's America.
Um...
Yeah, 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 but you can get the Pro as well. Digital edition in Playstation 5 Pro and Playstation 5 Digital. Which is what I want, 'cause I don't buy games, we download ours, don't we, so we don't need the disc drive. It isn't? It isn't, it isn't? Yeah, I know, but they're not the Pro. Pro's now, yes. They haven't, they were gonna release it on the same day, but they haven't. Which is less the one I want. Yeah.
You used to, till I got one.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I sh- Moshe's Maurice, no. There's none left, there's none left, too. Peter, no single civilian was at. No, why's our government there, knows? Retards, that's right. Oh, they like bullying innocent defences, blind people, that's what it is. Oh yeah, they wouldn't go down with a pair of ears. They'd get fucking bricked and stoned and everything. Shot. Well, they get stoned anywhere, 'cause they're all fucking druggies. Trying to cover up that they're not.
Wow, I found one round diamond in this.
Wow. Stick it on quick.
No.
Save it till the end. Oh, yeah, yeah. So it's supposed to be in the, in there?
No. It was the same colour as the square diamonds that just gone in by mistake.
Wow. Yeah, 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 'cause it's all plastic. There's plastic injection ball machines, they'll print billions of them, I'm just gonna go like Good business, it's a good business, that one.
I saved this on Facebook, that's how I got here.
Yeah. Yeah. You sure we're off to good? Yeah, good. So what, sold what? No, you tell them when they're done, don't stop it, you can tell them. Don't worry, you're not gonna do that.
No, no.
My god, shh, I'm watching a movie. God damn it, woman. Try you don't take it to the cinema, 'cause you never shut up. Ah, she swore. She swore in the game, oh my god. It's a good joke, C 18. Huh, tomorrow on your joke, swear any time you want.
I know.
Hmm. Got some good skill. Swar again. In jail. There you go, calling Alipul Council, that's where it is. All the corruption. The rats, see, they've even got rats on here, like Alipul Borough Council. No, they would not, for the British sailor of the world, transport them everywhere. Well, they built the Euro Tour, so fucking, there's all the fucking rabies, straight away in the country. That would have blown up that thing. Worst thing we ever did, was make that Euro Tour.
All us prisoners had become big fans of hers. You wanna hear something funny? The guards were big fans too. I swear to god, every time she was on the air, they'd turn up the volume on the radio and sit there listening. I could see how someone like her could win the hearts and minds of soldiers and workers alike. When the princess said something, I could tell she meant every word. Lately, she could have more fun with her speeches and that made her seem even more charming. You might say her charm was like a virus. Whenever she'd point out stuff that was wrong with Osea, the prisoners in here went nuts. Hell, if anyone knew how messed up Osea was, it was the prisoners. They'd shout, "Burn Osea down!"
Ben, Alipul Borough Council, down! No, what? I'm a fucking Tommy Robson with 50 million followers, am I? Who's gonna go and do it? That's a 50 million, Sarah. It's a long way off.
I've only got 18.
18 good subscribers though. No haters. All my subscribers are haters.
While I made fake planes, they had to get us some working ones. Then some genius at HQ decided we should send it up, so the base looked legit. Thankfully, we had people to glue on. It didn't matter what we were locked up here for anymore. Top brass and the pilots and criminals were all they had. A crook, a gambler, an anarchist, just your typical world lives. They threw each one of them in a cockpit and sent them up to intercept the enemy's planes. But in the end, it was all just for show. So, up they went, day after day after day. Today, they tossed someone new into the mix. Wondered what he did to get sent here. My dad died flying for the Osean Air Force. When your allies are surrounded, one of the most dangerous missions is giving them cover to retreat. Whoever signed up for that was a dear hero. But even more dangerous than that was being the one who had to cover the rear guards' retreat. That was my dad's daughter. And one time, he called it off. Said it was too late for him. Said anyone else would have done the same. I found that out from a war buddy of his when he came to tell me how my dad died. The next time the retreat happened, my dad volunteered to be in the rear guard.
There's Alipul's new flag. When I take over, Rebellion has begun. I'm gonna start Rebellion against them. I'm gonna start it tomorrow. I'll just take over, I'll just go in and kick everyone out and say, right, it's mine now. Know what he's gonna do? Take over all the council buildings, simple as that, you just walk in and take over, don't you? I won't. What happened to William Wallace? Oh, he got cut up into pieces and sent to every corner of England. Sent a message, but they're not like that now, they're kinda, what they're gonna do, cut me up, I don't fucking think so. No, then again. Put me in prison? Oh, they'll put me in prison, I'll be in charge of the town? I'm gonna start a, a, a political party called Rebellion. The Rebellion. Nihai, you're grasshopper. Margarita. (laughing) It's good from them. What was that? The cat's in the back fucking garden again. Where's my fucking hair, eh, for that? I'm gonna blow his fucking head off. S- The cat. Meow. Next time I lock it in the ship, well, next time it gets locked in me shed. I didn't lock it in there, just put it in there, wasn't it? Shouldn't have let the gun down, shouldn't have let it out. Shits all up me fucking garden, horrible fucking thing. Yeah, well, there's a way to sort it, and I'm gonna do it. Let that one put it in the weed bin. No, I'm not cruel, I'll just put it out of its misery, so it's not, it's, uh, human. Shoot it in the head. Orange bird doesn't work, it doesn't. And our rifle does. It's not cruel, it's humane. You put it out of its misery, instantly.
Shut up.
No? Slug straight through its fucking eye. Bitch. Shit in my garden. Time's arrow. There is, there is, yeah, they do the back garden too. Dumbass. This one's called. This one's called.
I had a chance to talk to one of the pilots that escaped back here, so I took it. Apparently, two of our planes took the enemy on alone. They covered the allies so they could retreat. The hell kind of idiot does a thing like that? The last pilot to land that base was that scrawny anarchist dude. He always had this dumb grin on his face, like he didn't give a damn about whatever he did to get thrown in here with the rest of us. Was he the only one that gunned him?
Got it, don't worry.
I bought him a drink later. After the usual small talk, I turned the topic around to the mission. For an anarchist, he struck me as a bit weird. Nothing like what I expected. He talked a mile a minute and kept going on and on about live books. Not encyclopedias, those cheesy adventure novels you read in high school. Nothing against those. I like a good story myself once in a while. But I wasn't here to talk books.
I remember that detail. Amidst this roaring clouds, Fighter Squadron was trying to help its allies reach safety.
He's pretty foolish, isn't he?
I thought so, too. Suddenly, a highly skilled fighter squadron appeared and began peaking in off of the edges. On one arm, they fell right out of the sky.
Although, I guess there was nobody around that was even more foolish to go to their area than them. So, you simply watch things unfold from a distance.
Yeah. I mean, who would have ever thought that I'd just go and follow straight into the enemy squadron like that?
After what felt like decades, I finally got to the info I was looking for. He wasn't the guy. He said he was just following his weight man's lead and managed not to die somehow. The hero on this mission was the new guy, the one that killed Gorgon. How did you feel?
I'm still kinda shaken up, actually. But you know, I do feel a certain sense of pride, too.
He really is foolish, isn't he?
Yep, he sure is.
I went to the hangar to have myself a closer look at Trigger's plane. I knew that works. That's what happens when an engine's been driven to its limit. This pilot was a hot dog. From now on, I was gonna keep my eye on this idiot. From a distance. I didn't wanna get too tight with someone who has a better pilot than my dad. Even so, I decided to give this guy's plane a little bit of the old Afro magic touch. He needed all the help he could get. Suddenly, we were being treated like a regular unit. We'd been ordered to pack everything up and move the base further along. We even got a transport plane. The funny thing is, no one here remembers I've got a bum leg and, oh, that I'm not a soldier. Take a look at the map. There's an island on the other side of Urusia where we've landed on. The space elevator's not too far from there now. They tell us the airbase is being used as a base to support the elevator. Not sure if I trust that intel. Anyway, the transport plane's gonna drop us there. Without any fighters to cover us. Some genius thought we could commandeer the enemy's jets they left at the hangars and use those to fight. Y'all aren't real soldiers, they said. Any other day, we'd be using lowlifes to go out and dig up landmines. And prisoners don't get guns. You'll just have to make do with whatever we give you and like it.
I have to find one for...
They don't let us prisoners near them. But with all the hustle and bustle of moving the base, they forgot to log this one up. Looks like an antique. I lost my right for a phone call ever since I was arrested and locked up. It's trippy to think that I can just hook it up, dial a number, and talk to someone from my own country. Planning escapes ain't all I'm good at. I'm plenty good at remembering phone numbers, too. A little while later, I headed over to HQ. You must know.
We did get a call direct from Command. That pipe, what exactly are you doing with it?
My grandfather had a lot of friends in the air force from his time as a lieutenant. My point? Well, you're going to set out in your own special aircraft. Then you'll send everybody else off in the wrong direction while you head somewhere else.
Alright, fine. But just you and you alone. You're the only one allowed out of the ward. Besides, there's only one seat left.
I said cool. That's exactly what I wanted.
Never want multiple players, but... Nah, fuck it, go on campaign. Say the stories. No, Ray, cares. Nobody cares.
Do you care? Care bears care.
No, they don't, because they'd be here other than me. Fight this fascist regime we've got for a council. So they don't care, do they?
You know what I mean, twat.
I know. Care bears do care. Especially the bumble butt. Bumble butt bear.
Bumble butt bear. You'll get some weird names and places you'll buy.
Yeah, I don't know, nah.
I love you, Father God. I wouldn't have you any other way.
Hey, I know who's the one, the YF-23, do you know why? That was the one what filled them... Oh, no, I don't think it was. It's not. I, I was thinking that's the one what, uh... What they designed with the F-22A. And... There was a competition, wasn't there, to build? No, no, there was F-35C and the YF-23. I'm sure they were in a competition. See which one was the best. YF-23, it doesn't even say what, I don't know what country it's from, must be from Japan. I think it's the new Japanese one or the Chinese one, I think. It's all good, alright. Never used this one. Never ever used it. It hasn't even got any stickers on, it's just got the normal stickers on. There you do go. The best one's the first MiG, man. It's fastest. Can't catch it, man, especially in, uh, online. Okay, outrun missiles, man. There it is. I thought we would have had the Blackbird, like, in here. But there's no missions. Oh, refueling. No. Fill me up. Fill me up, buddy. Fill it up. Fill it up. Ah, I done this one last night. Some ass now, though. Eh, I don't think he'd be talking, mate. Your radio would have been down because your engine's gone. Guys. Oh, he just missed that. Go, Squadron. They're awesome. I want one of them in me garden. One of them little drones would fall off the lava bed or whatever it is. It's a lava bed now. Arsenal blast. Ah, gets any sense? Nearly's on me. Ah, get in there. It's got bubble. It's corona bubble. May I come in, sir?
They're entering on their machines, don't show any mercy.
Gorgon, watch out!
Come on, Anna. Some flying shit. Shit, I can't. Shit, I got it. Okay. No! Alright, fucking get him. Fucking trying to kill this one. Need some undergun. Column two is lost. Ah, got me! Take us to get me missiles back. Happy days. There's one where I was just... Ah, ten love. I'm just flapping around. I'm gonna go to bed derby. Ah, if I can get to sleep. Really, I just feel tired, but I feel I'm not. Nah, it's alright, I'm gonna go to sleep. Right viewers, it's been a pleasure having you on board. Join us next hour to explain Article 8 Council more. For all the fascistness and spending our council money. Yeah. Peace out, love yous all. Peace and love. Bye, guys.